Good evening, everyone. We're going to open the meeting at 6:31 and entertain a motion to accept the agenda as may be amended. I did not have anything to move. Chris, you okay with it?
No, I'm very thank you.
All right, all in favor of the agenda is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
And are there any select board concerns? Oh, the minutes were about, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Monday, February 5th, 2024, at 1 o'clock. Chris Carr, myself, with the developers. They went into, there was one open public comment.
On the 5th?
This was on the 5th. And then we went into executive session. I don't see anything, I make a motion to approve the February 5th minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then Monday, the same day, at 3:00 P.M. We went in with the town side of VHB for easements and contracts. I don't see anything changed here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then Monday, February 12th, at 3 o'clock, the next following week, the same thing. I make a motion to accept them as.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
You can take the, so then, February 12th, Steve, that was our regular meeting. And you were included on it. Motion to accept the minutes. Can you see anything here?
Second.
All in favor?
Yep.
All in favor of accepting the minutes of February 12th, please say aye.
Aye.
Select what, number, feedback and concerns, nothing at this time?
Yep.
Nope, I have nothing.
Nothing that isn't already on the agenda for me.
Yep.
Do you think, or if you can check with the board, have something that's not already on the agenda? If you want to bring up. Aside from the broken television?
And the heat, working on it.
What's the deal with the heat?
So Peter's just waiting for the guy to come, he's ordered the new thermostat. He's wait, I poked him again today on it.
So we have no public comment? Logan is with the Rutland Planning Commission.
Yep.
And Thomas and Grace and Peggy, I think, are from Woodstock. So.
In that case, liquor control? Right.
Okay, these are all up for renewal. I was going to start with Killington Restaurants, Inc. Doing business as the Killington Grand Resort Hotel. They are up for a first, a second, and a third class license.
I'll make a motion for the town car to move forward, Killington Grand Resort Hotel, otherwise known as Killington Restaurants, Inc., for first, a second, and a third.
And a third, yes.
And we should note that this covers not just a particular building, but all of their
Yeah.
restaurants and clubs.
I was going to go through the other ones, too. I just wanted to group Killington Grand because they have a first, and a second, and a third.
Yeah, so this is just for the resort hotel, this one.
Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor of, they're going ahead, please say aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay, back to Killington Resorts, Inc. These are up for first class and third class. So Killington Resort, Killington Restaurants, Inc., doing business as Snowshed Lodge, Wobbly Barn, Bear Mountain Base Lodge, Northbrook Lodge, Jerk Mountain Grill, Clubhouse Grill, Killington Peak Restaurant, Killington Base Lodge, and Pyco Mountain Base Lodge.
I make a motion for the town car to move forward, but Riverside, Inc., for first class. Killington Restaurants, Inc.
Seven. Seven, all in favor?
And that was their third class as well. First and third.
First and third.
Yes. Okay, and last but not least, it's Mountain Song, Inc., doing business as Rivershed. They're up for renewal for first, third, and their outside consumption.
Make a motion to the town car to move forward, Riverside, Inc., for first, third, and outside consumption permit.
And could you tell us, us, the difference between license and permit?
The difference between?
The two are listed on different places.
What two are you talking?
On the very bottom, under Mountain Song, Inc.
The outside consumption.
One says permit, two says.
That's not, so the drink outside is a permit, it's not a license?
Yeah.
I'm just, so people tuning in.
Oh yeah, no, I'm saying.
Know what the difference is.
Okay, then I'll stop.
Yep.
Okay, I'll second that to you, Jim. All in favor, please say aye. All right.
So we just didn't do the Killington Resorts, Inc., Killington Grand Resort Hotel, did we say for a second?
The first one I mentioned, the Killington Grand Resort, it was a first, second, and third.
Okay, so, yeah, okay.
We have something to do in RRPC presentation?
Yeah, hi, that's me.
Hey, Logan.
Yes, so the Rutland Regional Planning Commission is updating the regional plan. So kind of similar to Killington's town plan, works on an eight-year cycle. So we're in the early phase of public engagement, and the plan is set to come out in 2026. So we're really early on. I want to flag that I, I think it was yesterday, we were at the, I think it was yesterday, we were at the Killington Transfer Station, talking to folks, getting their input about, you know, what's important to them. We're currently doing a survey. And so I took a look, and so our goal is a thousand survey responses across the Rutland Region. And so right now, we're about fifty-five, fifty-six percent of the way. But we also kind of broke this down on a town-by-town basis, because we want to hear from each town. And we took a look, and it seems Killington's at thirty-eight percent. And so we really want to make sure that, you know, Killington's included. Also, so if you go to our website, rutlandrpc.org, right at the top, it'll talk about, hey, we're doing this regional plan update. But also just kind of drop the direct link that takes you there in the chat, if anyone's interested. We really encourage you to take the survey. There's also community open house, which is kind of a more, kind of extensive version of these sorts of pop-ups that we're doing at the transfer station. And it seems like the closest one to Killington would be in Rutland City on April 17th. So that's another opportunity. But essentially, we're doing these different forms of public engagement. So the pop-ups is kind of one category, the survey is another category, the quote-unquote "community open house" is another category. We also have a regional plan email, I think it's plan2026@rutlandrpc.org. So if someone just wants to, you know, they don't want to fill out the survey, they could just kind of write a specific email as well. But really, the goal is to hear from the public and make sure that Killington's voice is included. That's really it. Are there any, are there any questions?
No, Logan, I don't have any questions for you. Thank you. At this time, I don't see any hands.
Logan, do they have the opportunity to win anything?
Yeah, thank you. There is an opportunity to win basically an outdoor bonfire pit, something like that. I think that's not exactly what it's called, but it's, you know, something great for a big old bonfire. You know, which is great for this time of year. So, yeah, there is an opportunity to win something. And actually, if you go to the community open houses as well, there's also an opportunity to win something else. I don't really remember what it is, but if you go to Rutland City, there are a few other ones. There's one in Wallingford, in Middletown Springs, in Bear Haven, but Rutland City is the closest. So.
Thanks.
Thanks a lot, Logan. Logan, I have a question. Is there a timeframe when you would like us to go back and do these things?
Yeah, so the survey, we're at a goal I had mentioned of a thousand responses. I think the goal, so the short answer is, is the survey is as soon as possible. But I would say we're, I think we're leaving the survey open for the remainder of March. Maybe into April, but I think we're really starting to look at the survey responses at the end of March, early April. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Logan.
You good?
Okay.
Okay.
So the next one is MVSU Budget Discussion, which is the mountainside, mountain view. Yeah, supervisory union. I've invited Dean from here, and he's down at C. Angelid, whatever, right there waving to us. When I was on the, when I was the chair of the Buildings and Grounds for the high school or for the district, just, this is the first year that I haven't been on it for quite a while. I was working with Dean, Dean is with JCI, he'll get into all that. But I just want people to understand that there were other ideas that were going on in the Buildings and Grounds Department, but this new build group would just squash us. They wouldn't let us bring anything to. They had told us that they didn't want to put a single penny into that building some six years ago. Six years ago, there was zero dollars allotted for capital improvement in that building. It took three years to fight to get fifty thousand dollars in. There's a lot of things that we could have taken care of back six years ago, okay? And it just was not allowed. So I've invited Dean, since I worked with him from JCI while I was on the board, and we can share, so Dean could share his presentation that he had brought to the board, you know, brought to the board, the Buildings and Grounds Board. And I think we even met one time with Ben Ford and them, correct, Dean?
Yes, early on.
For early on, too. And they just refused to listen to it. It was a new build, and that was it.
So they never really considered phasing the construction?
They never considered phasing it, but what Dean is going to get into more of, some of the issues that the school had, and how we were going to go about and fix them. It got so ridiculous that there was at one point where the teachers would prop open the doors, and then the vision of fire safety would come in, because they couldn't be propped open, because they would stay open. And I was like, well, let's just put the electric magnets on that gets wired into the alarm system. And the excuse from the new bill group was, we don't have enough electricity for that. Meanwhile, I'm just telling you what I was up against, okay? And the Buildings and Grounds Group. And then when COVID, I was like, you're on Route 4, if you don't have enough power, run another line over, it's cheaper than a hundred million dollars, okay? So then, when COVID came around, and they said the best thing was to get air moving, was to have doors open and windows open. So Joe Rigoli, who is the Buildings and Grounds Director, he went and found a grant, and sure enough, we had enough electricity to do that. One of the other things that they keep on talking about is saying that the one year, the heat shut down in six rooms. Okay? But what they forget to tell you is, is that the last year that I was on, that we turned the steam heat over to propane. So this whole year, this year, this winter, they're on propane, they're not, it's not being shut down. So another issue is, they say that the pipes, the plumbing, they're calcing them up and everything. And I was like, this is strange, because they're on city water, okay? They have the aqueduct over their water line. And it turns out that their water is still hard from that aqueduct, they don't treat the water when it goes out. But I've had that issue at the lodge that I own. And when I went to, and yeah, you have to get a permit, and you have to go through the state, but you get a water softener, and the water softener starts breaking the stuff down over time. But this is why we need a new building, okay? Then another one was, is that the sewer lines, we all saw the Susac come in with a box and said, here is broken sewer pipes or whatever, and the place is flowing with sewage. You know, I was told that this new building, you know, it works differently. And I was like, explain to me, like, so now new buildings, the sewer pipe is above the concrete foundation floor, you know? So, but, I mean, you got a pipe, you know where they are, you go in with a concrete cutter on both sides, you take the pipe out, and you put a new pipe in. And you do this during the summertime. So I'm going to let Dean take it from here on a couple of things. Dean, if you want to introduce yourself?
Sure, my name's Dean Angelides, I'm the account executive that worked with Jim in the Building and Grounds Committee over the last couple of years to put their energy project together. There's a whole lot of things that are missing from the finalized project, but we'll definitely get into that. Why don't I go through, I did actually do a very short PowerPoint presentation, but I don't want to bore anybody with a PowerPoint slide that just shows you what measures were actually done and what measures weren't done. I even gave Jim a copy of the original contract that we put out to, at the time, was Windsor Central Supervisory Union, before they changed the name to Mountain View. So kind of let me, let me kind of give you some of the background here, so that everybody can better understand what actually ended up happening. And when we started at the very beginning, it's a policy and a practice of Johnson Controls to, when they start developing a project like this, is that we set up regularly scheduled meetings with the Building and Grounds Committee and the Development Committee, so that everything that we go forward and we develop as a measure for the project is reviewed and determined, you know, whether or not it's in the project by the customer, by Jim and Joe Righoli at the time. What we were tasked to do originally, and it was a, thought it was a good thought on Jim's part, was we understood that there is a need potentially to build a new high school, middle school at some point. But we also looked at those buildings, and came to the conclusion that for far less, we could certainly make the buildings a lot more habitable, cleaner energy use through the, through the switch of the fuels, of the burning of making of steam as opposed to hot water. And we looked at other things, too, up to and including potentially building a biomass boiler plant that would sit on the campus grounds. It wouldn't necessarily be attached to the buildings, that way we, once there was a decision to do something with the high school, middle school, we'd already have the heating plant done and be able to pipe hot water into any buildings we could on the campus. So we looked at that, there was definitely some federal grant money that was looking to potentially subsidize that particular measure. And Jim, I think when we looked at it, was close to eighty percent of the cost.
Yeah, there was Northern Borders, which is town I'd received, Northern Borders for Tiff District. There was an eighty percent grant to switch over from propane or anything over to wood burning chips, which I've just found out from Green Mountain Power. Well, when I went up to, and you were with me, when we went up to Great Gulf at the resort to listen to the energy efficiency people, and they said most schools are wood burning chips now.
Those pellets?
You could do pellets, but it'd be more of the chips or whatever.
Chips are going to be, chips will be the most economical, probably the most expensive, but even at today's rates for fuel, you're still doing better off with a pellet or a chip boiler than you are with either gas fire or oil fire to this day. So the market, the market is certainly the right time to be playing that fuel game. And I hardly suggest that to Jim and staff, that the most important thing that you guys can do as a school is to have a portfolio of fuels and burning types, so that you can always try to buy the cheapest fuel for the schools. So it's always a good idea to diversify that portfolio. We had looked at solar carports for the parking lot at the high school as well, which would have really done a good job in offsetting the amount of KW used at the high school, middle school, and SAU building at that campus. We could have done some really nice things as far as that went. What we ended up doing, and we ended up doing at the request of the schools, we built basically about a ten million dollar project, with about half of that project coming from energy savings. And we'd had multiple discussions with Jim and Joe about potentially getting ESER or other stimulus funding involved, and possibly taking care of the other side of the project, which was definitely a capital side of the project. What basically ended up happening is that when we got down to September, October, and the schools had decided to move forward with the project, that project was cut down from ten million to just about three million. And I could show you that, you know, we had originally looked at boiler replacements for the elementary schools.
Could you put that, could you put that sheet up there? I think he's allowed you to share.
Okay, do I, I can share?
Yeah, I believe he's allowed you to share.
This screen might not.
Can you see my screen?
We can.
Yeah, a little bit, but, so if you go over to the next, we're going to see the left-hand side, so go to screen two. Okay, so I mean, it's based, the TV here is messed up, but you have Woodstock, Middle School, High School, all the Greens or whatever. You have the Woodstock, I mentioned, the Prosper, the Barnet, the Redding, and then I think it's Killington is the second to last, or no?
Yeah, Killington, all of that, right.
And then the last box is just, what is that?
Yes, the U. Yes, the U.
Yeah, okay. So these are a whole bunch of things that we were looking at doing. And when Dean says a ten million dollar project total, it was including the elementary schools, folks.
Yes.
And then at the bottom here, you want to go through this, the net finance investment? Because with JCI, it's, they take on the job, they put out the price, and they have to complete the job. And there is a contract that was written up that we wouldn't start making the payments until they finished completing it, okay? But if you want to take a run from there and show the O&M savings and how all that worked, Dean?
Sure, so what we did was we guaranteed, you know, basically if you're looking at this, that first number is the number that we're guaranteeing in energy savings and operations and maintenance savings. Because there's two places where we can garner savings from for these projects. One is the difference between a more energy-efficient piece of equipment, a more energy-efficient system. The second is any operations and maintenance savings that system would bring about. So that came out to just a little over four million dollars, four million sixty-five thousand, four seventy-six. The capital part, which was basically the other measures that we were looking to develop, where we could not find any additional savings or funding, that added up to about five-point-one million dollars, bringing the total net project cost to just about nine-point-two. And that actually does exclude, this one, Jim, does exclude the central boiler plant at the high school, so that's why it's a million dollars less.
Right.
At the time, the interest rates for this type of project was about four-point-seven percent. We were looking at a twenty-year term with the annual lease payment to be just about three-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, about three-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars, half of which would be guaranteed, or, you know, forty-five percent of which guaranteed in savings based on the above, the two top numbers. So, again, we had a plan, there was talk, and I would say, when we were getting to around March, April, Jim, we were talking about potentially having the ability to use semester funding to offset that five million dollar cost, to see if we could get as many measures in. But when it came down to it, and we got to the actual signed executed contract, that line, let me see, the line number twelve, went away for the schools, boiler burner replacements. That went away for almost all the elementary schools. There were things that were decided that Windsor was going to do on their own. So basically, what they did was, they took our detailed energy audit of all the measures that we suggested, republished them in bids, and put them out individually as bids on the street over previous summer. So, I mean, while we did lose a measurable part of, measurable part of the project, we still were able to put together a project of just a little over three million dollars. We have had some issues with the final measure of the building management system due to some delays, some delays on our branch side and delays in the supply chain. But what we've done for Windsor is we've come back and said that we will reimburse Windsor based on the finish date of the building control system, and the savings that would have garnered had it completed on time. So the delta, or the difference between our original finish date and the finish date for this particular measure is going to come back to, is going to come back to Mountain View in the form of cash.
And then, and then Dean, when you say April and May, we're talking really like 21, 22 area on a lot of those dates.
We're way, we're way over.
We're way back, this is like when COVID was first coming in, and there was, when he talks about ESER funds, there was a lot of the school funds from Opera or whatever on there. If you could see in the black line, number fourteen, the heating system, oh yeah, we ended up doing the heating system over there, switching it over to propane the last year that I was there for this winter, and it was one-point-two million, okay? The lighting on the sports field, we just didn't feel it was, you know, Buildings and Grounds was trying to make it so that the building was going to be habitable better. But what you could see here is that this annual lease payment is three-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. And this was going to be taking care of a lot of the elementary schools. It was really frustrating sitting on that board, you know, because there's a group that just wants a new building, and they would shut you down. And that would be just like me sitting here, you two just kept on shutting me down or whatever. We work as a group, and we try to get to an even point. This group just kept on pushing it away. Three-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-four, that's compared to this new build that they're talking about five-and-a-half million dollars per year just for that school building. We were also facing, like, if you remember, Dean, they didn't really want to do anything at the elementary schools, because they said the towns would become bond exhausted. So this is before Dean came in, it was like, the towns, the towns will get bond exhaustion or whatever, they won't let us do the big school or whatever. So then, when I came on to Buildings and Grounds, because I was in finance, Joe Rigoli handed me a book, because you were actually working with Joe, I think a year prior to me becoming Chair of the Buildings and Grounds, Dean? And then this, this book, the smaller projects or whatever, all of a sudden came to me, and I brought it up, and then you, as Johnson's Control, I mean, you made an agreement, or you had a, I worked a contract with you, that, how much work did you do? And it was no pay, that normally you wouldn't?
We probably, we easily did a million dollars worth of work that we did as just a, I'll say very simply, Jim, because I have probably the best construction manager at Johnson Controls, and he is all about trying to make our customers happy, and he is the boots on the ground, he is the gentleman that, when we put a contract together, honors all the commitments that Johnson Controls puts forward. And he's been a fixture at Windsor over the last, now two, almost two-and-a-half years, making sure that these things are getting done. Like I said, we're down to the very last part of this right now. I think the disappointment came from when we saw how much scope had been deleted from the project, and that we really could have gone after a lot of things to make a high school, middle school definitely a safer, more comfortable, and more energy-efficient building. While we worked on some of the other items that were, you know, actual repairs that have to go on at that school. And I know Jim mentioned the plumbing, and specifically, there is a sewer pump on the campus that we were looking at refurbishing as part of the project, and even went so far as trying to get some dollars for it, but it ended up being taken out of the project. And, you know, again, we're going to work with our customer to do whatever they want us to do, but we put a, I can tell you that we did put a ton of development effort into this one. And we were kind of hoping that we could have brought some. have brought some of the more substantial savings and done some of the work. And at the high school, which could have bridged the amount of, you know, the efforts of the new build committee to go after that school. And, and think about it this way, if we were able, if we'd been able to build a central heating plant, a wood chip or a wood panel central heating plant, that could have covered the high school, the middle school, probably the SAU building, and, and brought hot water in all over the place, think about how many millions of dollars that would have made the new build less.
So then let's get, let's get into the solar panels that I had you go out and the whole parking lot to put in solar panels up, like they did down at Rutland where it's on concrete, and then they bolt them down, and back in the, back, you know, now we're loo, now you're not getting as much credits for. This was like four years ago, Dean? That was like one of the best?
Yeah, the credits are gone now. There's one thing that's going on right now, Jim, that I know that Jim Fenn has already addressed. That's the Inflation Reduction Act, the federal program has within it a program called the Investment Tax Credit Program, and that's very specific to solar, but it provides a base 30% tax credit that's payable directly to schools on a one-time basis. And there are other potential adders for additional percentages of credit. But at this point, I think that Windsor's probably only going to qualify for the base. But, you know, if you were looking at, and again, if we had had the ability to do that carport on the parking lot there, we could have put up a pretty substantial array that would have definitely done and gone a long way to offset the current KW costs, moved, you know, a good amount of your energy being used at the high school, middle school to 100% renewable energy. And that's always a great story to tell. And we could have included that in, in the initial project. It would have been something we were really looking to do, but it got, that, again, that was something that got pulled out pretty much at the 11th hour. So again, we're, when we're given the scope, we're, we're going to realign the scope and reach under the cash flow and make sure that everything does work. But, and so far, you know, everything that we've been doing has been, you know, a positive to the schools. We are a little delayed in the building management system, and I'm not very happy about how that's turned out with our branch partners. But that's an internal problem at Johnson Controls. It's something I'm working on pretty much every day.
But what really got frustrating on the solar panels is when we showed the new build group that here we could put these solar panels up, okay, just like down at Rutland, the carports. And they were like, well, we're going to turn that area into a field. That's no longer going to be the parking lot. And we were like, well, you got the towers, you got everything, just you move everything over to the other side. I mean, it was like, but we've lost four or five years of getting energy efficient from solar.
Yeah. And Jim, another, just one other point to make about that, that civic spot to change that over to a park or a field.
Yeah.
Not, not, not feasible, not financially feasible, considering what's underneath that parking lot.
Right.
So, you know, the, the thing that we talk about when we, when we look at these types of projects, and it was a big concern when we did Rutland, was to make sure that we did a full scan underneath the parking lot, because a lot of times those parking lots are, you know, basically the highway conduit, plumbing, electrical, any other things that you want to have in your infrastructure that you want to basically put somewhere where you don't have to worry about it, well, we put it under a parking lot.
Right.
So there, you know, we were looking at that initially, and we were kind of, we were warning everybody that, you know, we, we were going to be doing some ground mount, some ground mount exploration of what's actually under the parking lot. We felt pretty strongly that we could have built a, a pretty decent size and array that would have been pretty close to, close to a megawatt.
And, and, yes.
That would have been a good piece of, that would have been a good piece of work.
Yeah, 1 gigawatt of, of solar. And what's really just frustrating is that here we are now, we're having a bond vote, and yet we're told that there is no other things to happen. You know, the, the Buildings and Grounds group was cut off. I mean, we were actually, didn't have a Buildings and Grounds group for two years when Mary Beth Bannos first came in. They just wiped it out and put $0 into it. You know, the Pomford Elementary School, the superintendent then, and the superintendent now, were totally against of putting a million bucks into that building to get it going. And now, thank God, we did, okay, because we got it up and running. But the big story here is, is like, there, there are other things, and I know this, it's really getting bad out there. It's like, the kids deserve it. But then at the same time, the parents, I don't know what parents are going to be able to afford it. So we're going to lose. No one here is saying that the kids can't have a school that they can be in. Okay? There was stuff going on, and there was a lot of work going on. You know, even Ben Ford was like, Jim, how did you get Johnson Controls to do like, it was $800,000 to $1 million worth of work without any guarantee? Because they knew they could do something. And they came in and they did it. You know, they put it together. And then they get shot down because certain people want a new building. It's crazy. Now, what the plan was with Buildings and Grounds was, is that, and, and you're seeing it play out now, five years later, in, in, in the state of Vermont Education and Phil Scott and the House and everything, they're starting to talk about, we really have to do another round of consolidation. So fewer schools, bigger schools. Well, 600 students is not big. And so I, as the chair, was pushing for, saying, what you have to do is exactly Chris and Steve, what we did going to TIF. We went in front of all the legislators. You got to get in front of these, Mary Beth. You got to tell them that we want to be the number one school. And when you start to decide to shut down the other schools, we will build this school that will fit 1,000, 1,200 kids. But that's what we need to do it with. I pushed for a million dollars into this new build just for the concrete foundation, so we could support a third floor. They took it out. Okay? They're building a building that's only going to fit 600 people. So I wanted to invite Dean here to go through that. But then I want Dean, because we met one time with Ben Ford and Jim Fenn and Joe Ragoli, what do you call it up in New Hampshire? P?
P3.
P3.
Public-private partnership.
Can you just go through what P3 is for those that don't know, for school?
Sure.
And where Vermont, and where Vermont is leaning towards right now?
Sure, absolutely. So, so P3 is really just another financial treatment that public institutions can use to partner with private institutions to build buildings at fixed cost. So, for example, at Johnson Controls, probably, we, we lead, we lead the industry in this type of construction, and I think we probably were the first ones to start it. But what happens is, is that Johnson Controls can design, build, finance, operate, and maintain any structure. We're set up to do that as a company. And we can do any of the number of those things in that wheel of services to get you the building that you're looking for. One of the things that we, we discussed early on that I don't think the new build committee didn't receive very well was, instead of looking at building a new building, why not take the opportunity and spend half the money and refurbish that high school, middle school from the ground up and make that building useful for another 25, 30 years? While, you know, while other folks are entertaining building a new building, or building a, you know, building a new high school, middle school, I think you got more than enough property to, to work vertically and build another floor. I agree with Jim, his assertion that the, to put that concrete down would have been a good first step in renovating that building. But, but again, I think that's something that everyone is going to have to be on board for. And I, I would say that, you know, you look at, what, at this point, 90 to 95 million dollars coming in this, this potential bond to rebuild a building. I would say for 35 to 40 million, you could do a lot of refurbishing of the building and really take a whole summer and get, you know, every kid out of that campus, do all the things that you need to do from a plumbing and electrical perspective. And then, you know, with the, the measures that have already been enacted, like the fuel switch and the boiler replacement there, well, now you're just setting yourself up for success, you know, for the next 20 to 25 years. And now you're giving yourself a lot more time to figure out, well, we want to build a building for 1,200 kids, what does that look like? And then how can we do it in such a manner where we can capture all of our costs every year and do it almost like, I would look at it almost like a lease purchase, and say for this fixed amount over 30 to 40 years, whatever term you want. Because in the P3 world, you can have a longer term than 20 years, where the state statutes for performance contracting limit, limit you to 20. But you can go a lot farther in the public-private procurement world and go for any term that really that you want, that makes it an affordable, measurable outcome for you every year, so your budget planning for that building would be ostensibly done. But that's what public, that's what public-private could be. And I agree with Jim. That's one of the things that we talked about early on in 2021, we were developing the project, that it would be, at some point, would make sense to get in front of Secretary of Education and the rest of the folks at Vermont AOA, and start asking them the questions that we need to ask. Because right now, the only statutes that pertain to public-private partnerships in the state of Vermont are specific to transportation. And even those laws are about to come off the books, I believe, within the next two years. So there's going to be an opportunity to come back in and maybe have a larger discussion with Vermont AOA and say, what, what are your thoughts about public-private partnership when it comes to building new schools? Because that would be something I think that Johnson Controls would, would love to partner up with. We would probably engage with a, we would engage with a general contractor to do the actual work. But again, the benefits of, of these types of projects for all of you folks is that Johnson Controls would be the single point of contact for the project. We would own the responsibility for execution, we'd own the responsibility for producing the results of whatever plans we put together and execute. So I think one of the biggest advantages of dealing with somebody like Johnson or anybody else on our, on the energy side of the business is the mitigation of risk. When you engage us, you're mitigating risk. You're taking risk away from yourself. You know, for example, you look at the line number 13, the boiler burner replacement across your elementary schools, well, those got pulled out. Those were pulled out and they were bid separately. And each separate bid is the responsibility of Jim and Joe or Jolie to make sure that those all execute well. That had been within the project, that would have been our scope, it would have been our responsibility. We would have been the single point of contact to make sure those all get done. And in the process of getting those done, something that I, I need everybody in this room to understand, those boilers have to be controlled by the building management system. So there is, we're putting a Johnson Controls management system into all of these schools. So at some point, Alliance, who was the vendor that won those, those burner replacement projects, are going to have to come to Johnson Controls for some programming time, so we can make sure that every boiler has been properly integrated into the building management system.
So, so Dean, I, I mean, I invited Dean here just to show you that there was other avenues to go. So anyone that's like thinking, oh, I have to vote yes on this bond for $99 million that is saying it's $5.5 million a year, okay? But yet, this group of the new build, or the whole board now, because it has changed, like Pamela Frazier was on with me from Barnard, she asked for four years, just do a feasibility study, and they still never did it. They just tell you. But what they are telling you is that it's 5, 5.5 million a year in a bond payment. That's what it is for like some 30 years or whatever. And then they're telling you, like with this new pupil waiting count or whatever, okay, that we have 1,522 kids. Well, that 5,500,000 divided by 1,525 is adding another $3,606 per pupil cost. And then if you divide that by the $9,975 that they're saying for the, for the, the wait, right? That's another 36 cents on top of the tax rate that we're going to see. Okay? And, you know, the plan was, and, and, and it, and, and in my mind, it still is, is that, yeah, it is a great school inside. The teachers are great, the classes are great, the building is a little old. But we're, it, it's like, I've known some really smart people that came out of basements in the Brook, in Brooklyn, in Bronx, really smart people, okay? It's the, it's not the building. It's, it's, and they're, and we could see it ever since Act 60 started. A lot of folks, well, everybody here has been pretty much here since, you know, Act 60 or whatever, but a lot of folks don't remember Act 60. And when it came in, Steve, we lost a lot of people with kids. You were on the school board. You were the chair of the elementary school. Okay? When taxes start going up 3, 4, $5,000, you start.
Five times.
Five times. You start losing people. So then your pupil count goes down. What the state of Vermont has realized since 1997, and then it was enacted in 1998, was is that there is too many buildings and a declining enrollment of students. But somehow, this group thinks we're going to be the only district that's going to have a growing population. Okay? With our taxes going up quite a bit. All right? And, and, and the funny thing is, is like, we sit on a board, and like, seven days a week, if my phone goes off on a Sunday, I pick it up no matter what during the daytime for someone. I can tell you that there is nobody from the school board that is at this meeting, because about two weeks ago, okay, they started to block anyone that said we should go another way. So, you know, there's, um, there's, there's.
What do you mean they blocked?
So it will not accept my email. So this is a board, okay? And there's a few people, like Lisa Lawler's on here, one of the Fraziers, Peggy Frazier's on here, there was a Mark Weinstein. You know, they were trying to send emails to the school district. Even our, even our two representatives in Killington, well, they didn't do it, I'm sure. I'm sure that it's the district is blocking people saying, and a lot of these people in Woodstock and a lot of these people in these other towns, they're all saying, I want good for our kids, but at the same time, I want it to be at, at a good rate. You know, because otherwise, you can't stay here.
Yep.
So I'm, I'm going to end it on that. If, if anyone has any questions from in the audience first.
I have a question. Did I, my tax dollars pay for this propaganda that went out today?
I have no idea who paid for that.
It says Mountain View Supervisor Union.
Yeah. I have no idea who paid for that.
What was it?
It's in our PO boxes in our mail.
It says, well.
Vote yes.
Vote yes.
It doesn't say vote yes, but there's no other option.
Yeah.
That's what bothered me.
Yeah.
I've seen this all along. You can't, I can't believe we can't fix the school.
Right. Anybody else?
I have a question. Did you guys have a chance to look into the hydro since the school is sitting right on the water?
Yes. I brought that up early on.
And that was really big deal with Agency of Natural Resources, Dean, I believe?
Yeah. It was, it was, it was a monumental task to do any type of hydro in Vermont. It's a, it's a difficult proposition at best. I actually have a, I stay in New Hampshire, is my customer in, in New Hampshire, and we're actually talking about possibly taking every state building off the grid vis a vis the Merrimack River, which runs right through concrete. And we're looking at, there's a, there's a new technology out that I've been championing at Johnson Controls called Vortex Hydro. It's actually being used very successfully in Europe right now on a smaller scale.
Of course.
But you can't channel off a river these days without changing the temperature of the body of water, that affecting the ecology. the body of water, that affecting the ecology. You could do it on a, a stream or a river that has, for lack of a better expression, low pressure, because the way these, uh, the way these, uh, generators are built, they're built at the end of a cyclonic structure, a cement cyclonic structure. So as that water swirls down cyclonic structure, it gathers energy and it turns into impeller at the bottom. There's even a space under the impeller that if fish end up getting caught in the trough, they'll end up swimming out underneath and not getting chopped up in the impeller that's powering a, a generator. And right now, I've seen generator suites for these built to the size of 500 KW. So again, if you've got a body of water and you can put two or three of these, these types of generating stations alongside a river, and we're actually looking at this for City of Rattlin right now too, because we're about to do a, an energy project with the city, a meeting with them Wednesday night. So there's, uh, there's tremendous opportunity to go after hydro. But again, it's got to be, uh, it's got to be, it's got to be the right regulatory environment. Um, and it's got to have, again, at the end of the day, for everything that I do, it's got to cash flow. The investment, the initial investment has to be able to stand the test of time and savings over time have to pay for the project.
So Dean is probably in phase three or four now at Rattlin High School. Um, Jay C, phase four in Rattlin High. So I, I'm going to ask anybody that's on the Zoom call, if you'd like to ask a question, go ahead. And once again, this is Killington, but it's a school district, so all the towns are allowed to ask a question if they want. So if anyone has a question, please raise your hand or speak up.
I don't see anything yet.
Uh, go ahead, Peggy. The left on, there you go.
Hi. My question has to do with the problem specifically in Woodstock, where the school is located, with the water aqueduct company, which there are issues, I think, most people are aware of, and we do not know what the future holds at this point. We certainly won't know by March 5. But are there assurances? I asked Ben Ford a while ago about that, about the issues, which he said he wasn't aware of. But if you live in Woodstock, I think, especially if you live in the village, you are aware of issues. And, um, we don't, we don't know, can, can the water aqueduct company, unless something radical happens, can it even supply the water that's needed for a new building?
So Dean is not going to be able to answer that question because Dean worked last with me on this over two years ago. But I can tell, I can tell you that I've seen what's going on in Woodstock as far as with the water. Michael lives, Michael Ramsey lives in Woodstock now. And, you know, there's fire hoses that are running along the bridges because the pipes are broken and everything. I also know they have lost pressure and stuff and everything. Um, you know, I know that there was a, um, a, a business that wanted to put some apartments up above and the aqueduct couldn't give a, um, a, what is it called?
No pressure.
No, no. When, when you first can hook up, uh, what is that?
Permit, permit to operate?
Permit, not permit to operate.
It's over good arguments, man?
No, 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 no. Hold on one second here. Hold on one second here.
Didn't have enough pressure or?
No, what is?
They have to do, they have to
They have to give a letter of, to be able to provide.
Oh, a letter of, uh,
Letter of
Commitment for the water?
For anything, even sewer, that you have the ability, like the sewer district has the ability to serve you, that they have to show that they have the capacity. But they shut this one thing down for like four or five apartment buildings. Now, this building is taller. It's supposed to have a sprinkler system in it. Like they're selling you this sprinkler system and they don't even know if they have the water or the pressure for it. They, they lose pressure at the school. So I mean, all I'm coming to here is like, it's, it's, slow down. A no vote is just going to make them think, okay? They're telling us that we, we approved $1,650,000 this past year for permits and studies on the building. They spent every dollar on engineering the building, nothing on permits. When I asked about stormwater, Steve, they gave me an answer, this is about six weeks ago, and I read the report and it said, based on 2017, stormwater, we're in the three acre stormwater permit now. It's, they don't, they don't have it. Where are you with Act 250? We can't apply for Act 250 until we have a yes on the bond vote, okay? Well, I don't know. That's kind of funny because there's a village, okay, that got an Act 250 permit long before, 12 years ago, you know? So when they tell you they're going to start this project like July of this year and we're going to move into it in August of '26, okay, a stormwater permit, I looked it up online and for Vermont, it could take anywhere from 12 to 18 months just to get to build your stormwater. You know, this thing is just, it, we're like five or six years out from. They telling us that, um, that we're going to have this, and it's in the paper again this past week, like three and a half years of no payments. Like this is why we're not going to go for a bond loan, if you read it. We're not going for a bond bond for three and a half years because the, the state may catch up and then we'll have some 30% or whatever. But where are you getting them? You don't build a $99 million building and not have any payments for three and a half years. So I just wanted to invite Dean to go through to show that there were people working inside. Peggy's daughter Pamela was one of them from Barnard, okay? Matt Ho from Bridgewater was another one, and myself. It was, we had stuff. We got shut down. And now it's like, put it up. So I'm, thanks a lot, Dean.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Not a problem, not a problem. I can, I can vouch for Jim. He called me on a Saturday about this. So I can definitely vouch for Jim.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Dean.
Thank you. Thank you, folks.
Let's move on to ARPA.
So now the rest of it is our regular meeting, Woodstocks. I don't think you really care about that part. But thank you for coming.
Actually, I have a question. I was just looking at the water. It's Patrick.
Yeah.
Um, there was news articles about the aqueduct company because they're a private company. They can't get FEMA grants and some other stuff, and they wanted the town to take it over. Do you know if any movement has been made on that of the Woodstock town taking over the water?
So the Woodstock town, that's what Peggy's talking about. They're talking about it. And if you look in further, the, the,
No, no.
Go ahead, Peggy.
Excuse me. The, the select board in Woodstock is sent a letter of intent.
To take it over.
To the water aqueduct company.
Well, not to really take it over, to buy it out.
No, no, no. They, they need to do, I believe, a lot of due diligence, but
True.
There is a letter, a letter of intent as of last Tuesday.
Okay.
So $980,000 in debt already is what the company is for. So they want to clear that. And then nobody knows what, how much has to be spent on fixing the water lines.
Okay.
So, all right. Thanks a lot, everyone on that. Where are we at?
ARPA.
ARPA. Okay. So since March 11th, 2021, the town has received $226,041.36 in ARPA funds. At first, this was only to be used for three specific things, but then the federal and state government opened it up to pretty much you can use it for anything within the town. Uh, there are deadlines to this. One's coming up, and that's to obligate the funds. Uh, I've worked with our attorney on it, the auditor and BLCT. And the easiest way to do this is to obligate, uh, the money into the general fund by claiming it as municipal workforce retention. All you're doing is avoiding deadlines by this, and it frees up the money. So what I'm looking for tonight is a motion to obligate and expend SLF RF funds in the amount of $147,820.75 for the purpose of municipal workforce retention. And I'm almost done. The reason we're only doing 147,820.75 is because the other, uh, the difference was, has already been expended.
Yeah. So I'll, so moved on that.
Yep.
Motion.
Do you need anything further?
No.
Uh, yes, vote.
A favor?
Aye.
Aye. So this is where we were short that one year on, um, rooms and meals tax, rooms, meal and alcohol tax, because the places were closed down. So we did use some money in the budget on that at that time.
I think you got the printer too.
And a printer.
Next up. I'm guessing you need the others.
Assignment afterwards.
Road H? Name Road H?
Yeah, we've got a, we've got to pick a better name for, uh, we've got to pick a better name for Road H, which will be, um, created as part of 1B.
So Road H is behind the distillery, Mountain Inn, and in front of, I think, Pinnacle? And they just call it Road H? So there was a couple of examples given out. Michael had one, Selva Way. I said, no way, okay? Um, I had a joke of saying, call it Shovel Ready. So, you know, um, if anyone ever asks, like, why is that called Shovel Ready? Um, it could be like, how much work this board has had to put into this shovel-ready project and still doing a lot of work. But there was also another one out there. I think it was Schifferan Way. There, there was one that was Schifferan Way. Some, some, I think, there was the first two was Schifferan Way and, um, or Shovel Ready. So it's RJ up to name a road as a board. So Michael's bringing it up today.
Do you have some time to think?
You want some time to think or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Turn it on the ballot.
You know? No, it's our, that would be next year then. We want to name it before we build it, okay? So, um, you know, there's Schifferan Way, Shovel Ready Road, um, or come up with something else. So, you know, I mean, if any audience members have a, have a suggested name, just send it to planner@killingtontown.com and then I'll forward to, um, Michael, because he gets a lot more emails than I.
Shovel Ready's got a lot of approval.
Shovel Ready, I like it. You know, Shovel Ready Road, you know?
A little history to it.
A little history to it. Tell us everything from there. But so if anyone else has any other suggestions, just, just put them into planner@killingtontown.com.
Isn't that Lisa?
No, that's me. I have that email address for whatever reason. I don't know why. I don't argue. I'm only,
I thought you were zoning.
I, I, no, I'm only interim. I'm interim zoning and I have planner@killington. She has Lisa.
Lisa has one. She's the only one.
She has her name.
With a unique.
She has Lisa something.
She's smart.
So when she leaves.
Yeah.
She leaves.
It'll revert, we're exit and it'll revert to.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway.
All right. So submit it to planner.
Okay.
And, uh, could you explain what the raise grant is?
Steve, uh, Steve has a hand up, or he did.
He's muted right now.
Does anybody have a question on the Zoom? Once?
I'll let those when you're done, Chris. I didn't get to the green ones. I didn't get to the green ones when you're done.
Oh, okay.
What's in the chat? I can't get my audio to work. Do you want to text it to us, Steve?
No.
Or, or message? Go into the four to see what's there. Obviously, we can't see it, right?
Oh, he doesn't have anything. Oh, it says, is this a road name change?
No, it's a new road.
Yeah.
H Road is just what SP Land called it for a placement, but it's never been a road yet because it's not built.
I see a sound.
Um, so we're, we're, we're done on that, right?
Is that a connecting road or is it just a?
It's a connecting road from Old Mill Road, which is the distillery in Cascades into, um, back to East Mount, uh, back to Killington Road. So Old Mill in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go there and you're back out onto Killington Road.
I didn't know it came back out.
Because there's a roundabout and there was supposed to be, in case something happened at the roundabout, that people could still get through.
Makes sense.
Okay.
What's next up there?
Uh,
Raise Grant?
Yeah. Um, the Raise Grant, the town is eligible for $25 million in federal funding for an infrastructure project. Um, and we've worked with VHB to prepare an application to be submitted this week. It is for the reconstruction of all of Killington Road. Uh, the, the loan, the grant amount is 25 million. And what I'm here to ask is for the board to make a motion to submit the Raise Grant application.
So last year, we applied for the Raise Grant for 1A up in there. But now, since we already have gotten quite a bit of money from water and a bunch of other stuff in the USDA, um, we're filing this year from the lookout that the town actually owns all the way down to Anthony Way. And it's 25 million. And I think there is some budgeted number, not the whole, it was an estimate at the time of like 26 million. So we're making a motion to
Submit the application.
Submit the application. So I'll make that motion to submit the application for a Raise Grant. So, um, last year,
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Last year, we were told, like, the first year, it was kind of a rush because these things come on. But we have a letter from, um, all three, um, representatives in the federal government, Bernie Sanders, Peter Welch, and Becca Ballant. And they've all signed it and it's a really good letter. And, um, you know, it's due on the 28th. And Lisa with VHB, she's doing a lot of work on it. And she's doing a great job.
Great work.
Very good.
So hopefully we get it.
Yep.
Great.
He said all in favor and we said yes.
Yep. So the amendment number four, contract five through seven, this is to allow the town to start beginning the design of the water main from Ravine Road to the dry line located at Anthony Way. The total amount of this amendment is $280,000. We're just looking for the board to, uh, approve this amendment.
I'm going to make a motion for the, um, town manager to go forward with amendment number four for contracts five through seven of water. Can I get a second?
Second.
And then I just want to point out that, you know, there, there are a lot of people like, how, they really want to see the affordable housing come on faster. And we started this about three months ago to get it going. So five through seven is from Ravine Road all the way down to hook up to Anthony Way. And we're looking to get this ready for bid. So possibly we can start doing this, um, end of next year and get the water done in two years from there, all the way down to Kelly. We're trying, we're trying to get this project fast-tracked and getting it a lot faster than what the, originally we were saying like six years or whatever to get water down there. Um, so.
Yeah, the idea was not to wait.
Yeah.
Like just the design work we can get done now, everything we get done ahead and, and if the stars align, we can go forward.
Do we know how much of the access road is actually in the right of way?
Ray Page has done all the surveying.
That's what this person's being hired to do.
No, this is just for water. He's already done the, this is just the water line. This amendment is for water, okay? Ray Page has already done and he's just finalizing all the drawings.
Now, is he supposed to be in the right of way or is he going to be?
The water line will be in the, in the, in the right of way.
Okay.
Yeah. The water will be in the right of way.
Yep.
But, um, and then the reason why going on this is because there is a bunch of money that was available from AWPer or whatever, a lot of sewer and water projects. And there's a lot of towns that are not as far ahead as we are. And this money has to be spent or started by the end of 2026. And as they get closer and closer to that date, more money comes available. And we want to be there to say, we're ready.
And more people start asking. So we want to be on the front of it.
Yeah. So, well, it takes a long time once you're
It takes so long to get these, you know, get the design work done, get a number. And we're just so far ahead of it that we're, we look really, like, chances are good for us.
Well, and when you, when you're truly shovel-ready.
Yeah. Yeah.
It goes a long way.
Another road down here called Really.
Really, really.
But, um, and, and this contract is to, um, DeFrane's group.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Good.
So we have a first and a second, and then.
Favor.
Aye.
And we have a certificate for highway mileage?
That's correct. You got, I'm sure the board has seen this form before. It, it, you know, the ta, towns in Vermont get X amount of dollars every year, and it's based off X amount of mileage, and we just have to certify to the state that the mileage is correct. So just need, um, a motion to approve the certificate of highway mileage for twenty twenty-four.
Some moves?
Yep.
And I think we do this every year.
Yeah, you do.
I remember doing this not that long ago.
Yep. That's how we get payment.
All in favor of submitting the certificate of highway mileage? Please say aye.
Aye.
And we are up to you.
Um, we, we've been, we've had some busy board meetings lately, so, you know, unless there's an objection from the board, I think what we'll start doing is, on the fourth, no, on the second meeting of the month, we'll do finance reports, and then on the first meeting of the month, we'll do manager, fire department, and police reports.
Okay.
So I don't have any comments on the treasurer's report. Uh, it, it is not reflective of how much money we have in the bank now, just because taxes weren't due.
This is January thirty-first. And I can just tell you, on the first page, if you go to zoning, and it says rental registrations, and it's showing one hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred. We're, um, I think as of today, we're at two-ten since Jan, so, so for twenty-six days, we've picked up another thirty thousand dollars in rental registration.
Cool.
So I'll make a motion to accept the finances, um, comparative report of January twenty twenty-four.
Uh, we'll second it.
Favor.
Aye.
I'm going to make a motion to accept the Green Mountain National Golf Course comparative report for January twenty twenty-four. There's really no change in it from December of twenty twenty-four, of year, twenty twenty-three.
Agree.
So, do you second it, Chris?
Mm-hmm, second.
Do we know if they included a new roof for the shed?
That, that's just, that's just the spending and, and income, it's not the budget.
I do have, um, quotes that were put together for the new roof. I just need to consolidate them and present them to the board.
Because that one company came in, had a really good idea to cover the whole thing. Instead of having to take everything out, they were going to put a rubber roof over the whole thing, because it's got the spines already there, and they could attach it to the spines.
I can make a point to have it on a meeting in March.
Okay.
That should set us up well for our summer construction.
So while we're at the golf course, if you look at the treasurer's report, you can see that the balance of January thirty-first of twenty twenty-four is four hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars in the bank account, and in the restaurant, there was twenty-four thousand. So five hundred and four, almost five hundred and five thousand dollars sitting in cash in the golf course. When you and I first started six years ago, I think that was negative.
It was loaned out.
It was negative. They have, they have plenty, they are not borrowing money to, to move for, to, to, to open up the following year.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm going to make a motion to accept the treasurer's report for January thirty-first of twenty twenty-four.
Second?
Favor.
Aye.
Okay.
Back to your citizens' input.
Patrick Fisher. Has the, the select board ever looked into inclusionary zoning, um, where you're changing, use the zoning policies to, for like big construction, but workforce housing as a portion of the bill? We used to do it down in Alexandria, Virginia, so when you say, like, you, you know, it was a satellite town to DC, so most of the people wanted to travel into DC, come back and live there, and then you kind of start pushing out the people that would support the work in restaurants, the, all that. So they put it in place, and, uh, every structure that, I think, was like over five units, uh, had to have ten percent of the low-income house, or moderate income, not low-income, but like workforce housing. Uh, I know Vermont has, hot, like, it, it has the tools to do it, but it doesn't seem to be implemented. Do we know if the town has ever looked into setting zoning up like that?
I know it was part of the Act two fifty process that, uh, originally, as, um, the, with the original permit that they went through.
I, I think that.
It was discussed.
I think the question is, in Act two fifty, housing, house, housing comes into place.
Okay.
So what everyone has to remember is, is that the two hundred and thirteen units or whatever, that's approved at this point? They were approved underneath whatever rules back then.
Oh, yeah, they're going to be grandfathered in for whatever, but.
But, 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 but once again, it's like, this is a select board. We hire on a, or he hires on, a, uh, town planner. They just went through a whole bunch of zoning changes, and that's the, that, that's where ci, citizens are supposed to go to the rec department, they're supposed to go to the planning commission, you know? They're supposed to go to those to start asking, like, have you seen or whatever. They come to us then, and so like, we have them wanting a public hearing shortly on some zoning changes that they've done, and then when they're done with those zoning changes, that's then, then it comes to Michael, and then Michael will want something in twenty days for us to get involved in. But if we start sitting there and doing their jobs, they're going to be very mad at that commission that we're doing their jobs.
Mine's, it's more of a, a history. I'm not sure if the town, the history of the town has been.
Yeah, I mean, there, 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 there has been stuff, but, um, it's more of, at the time, it was Rutland, um, was the housing. I mean, and so you can say, I mean, there's two hundred and, there's two hundred and thirteen or two hundred and twenty-three units that's approved up there in phase one. Between the resort and the developer, they've just pledged for a June payment of seven hundred thousand dollars for a seventy-acre lot for two hundred and fifty to three hundred units, and they are willing to help after that. This is just the first step. They know to go through Act two fifty, the housing question's going to come up. So, I mean, there has been talks, but it's just talks right now. Until, until we get that water, that's where, you know, that's where we're looking to put. So maybe that's the area of what you're talking about when they come in with other phases for some help.
No, I mean, and that's the thing that, again, to the zoning board.
Well, planning.
Planning board. Uh, if, if it is something that the town wants, instead of counting on Rutland to be the housing or other towns to be the housing, if they want to take control of it, that's something that any future builds, because again, your current builds, anything that, that's grandfathered, and that's going to be this contract, that's all done. The future builds, there may be some that town can control then, is workforce housing by including a portion of it when you do multimillion-dollar condos, then, you know, three or four have to be lower-income housing by zoning.
Yeah, but this board took a step over a year ago of, of acquiring a seventy-acre lot.
That's great, but.
And then, and then still, didn't just say the town's going to pay for it, we went as a group to the developer and to the resort and said, hey, how about ponying up the money?
No, I think that's great. I just, I think workforce housing is a problem that's never really going to go away in our town because of.
Right.
How it is.
Yeah. So, so we'll look at it, but we are looking.
I don't think it'll go away, but I think we've mitigated it.
We can mitigate it.
And that's, and I think we've taken great steps towards making sure that that will happen in the future.
The next step is getting that water. Contract four, five, seven.
Nobody will talk to us until we get the water there.
Okay?
And that's true.
So.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Any other citizens?
Anything else before we, we want to?
Anything on the Zoom people?
Other business that we didn't cover?
Nope.
Cool.
Do we need to exit the session, Bradie?
Oh, just really quickly, uh, to, at the last regularly scheduled select board meeting, the board made, um, the board approved a resolution for two loans. One was for the road, and one was for the water between Anthony Way and Route Four. It got, Jim actually pointed this out, that, um, on the, on the loan obligation, uh, it was calling the water portion TIF, and that raised more alarms. And so we didn't want to, uh, go through and, and pass and take a bond that may not have been approved by voters. So it was a very small portion of the project.
Yep.
We don't really need the loan. So, just so that the board is aware, we did not follow through with the water portion. We've only taken out a bond for the road.
Okay. So it was like two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, I think, something like that?
Yeah, it wasn't much.
For the water? And when we did this TIF, we had always said that we have this where, where we borrowed money for the whole Killington Forward project, and we can pay with that, but then, once we get this thing going and we get a water district going or a water company going, that that money will go, that those loans will get put over to, to that group.
Mm-hmm.
So they are paying, because we had said, if you're not on the water system, you're not going to end up, we're going to be paying for it. So that's how we're covering it.
Okay, yeah, I know.
And then, for, just an update on the, just an update on the, on the new town hall. I've received, um, architectural plans. We are going to hold one week because we thought we were going to have to do a change order because the structural engineers are still putting something together for the vault, but you can save a lot of money if you don't have to do a change order. So the structural engineers will have, uh, bid documents to me at the end of this week. We're just going to combine them with the architectural plans and send it all out in one big bid.
Okay.
Worth the week.
It's worth the week.
Great.
Is that it? Do you have an elevator in that building, because two stories?
Um, no, not at this time, when we, when we bought the, um, building, um, to keep costs down at this time. If somebody has to get up to the other side, if you go around the back of the building, there's actually a handicap ramp and steps that leads to the back there. And there's partly in the back, and there's also, there will be a staircase that go there, but we did look at, Jen, how about elevator? It just wasn't in, uh.
Yeah.
Maybe down the road, but for now, no.
The, I guess it would be other business. This is a point of clarification, and it's not for anybody that's here. This last week, someone approached me and asked why the board had adopted this year's budget. I said, we didn't adopt the budget. Yes, it was voted on at the last meeting. I said, no, the board chose to submit the budget for the town to vote on. The town votes on the budget, not the board.
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, I was in a debate the other day, and the person that's running against me has left or whatever, okay? You know, I think it's the same.
Was that the same question?
You know, but, but it was basically saying that, you know, this board broke illegally